Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's 1:30 right now, but we're also waiting for a quorum to be established before we call a meeting. All right, good afternoon. It's 1:33, and we'll just go ahead and call our third day of our budget information hearing back to order.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's 1:30 right now, but we're also waiting for a quorum to be established before we call a meeting.
And I'll go to establish quorum. Let's go do the role, please. Thank you. One of our supervisors has some incidents at home, garage, so we're dealing with it. So anyway, so I'll give another extra couple of minutes today. Thank you.
One of our supervisors has some incidents at home, garage, so we're dealing with it. So anyway, so I'll give another extra couple of minutes today. Thank you.
Supervisor Abi Koga?
Here.
Supervisor Yu?
Here.
Supervisor Ellenberg?
I'm here.
Vice President Aranis?
Here.
President Lee?
Good afternoon, President, as well.
You have a question.
Thank you. So if you're in chambers and requiring the Spanish or Vietnamese translation, those translation devices are available at the back of the chambers. The clerk can assist you with the setup. Translation is also available on Zoom using the interpretation button. Additionally, as a gentle reminder for public commenters, staff, and those on the dais, please speak clearly and at the measured pace directly into the microphone to ensure accurate translation. And may I ask Supervisor Ellenberg to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please stand if you're able. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, good afternoon. It's 1:33, and we'll just go ahead and call our third day of our budget information hearing back to order. And I'll go to establish quorum. Let's go do the role, please. Thank you.
Supervisor Abi Koga?
Here.
Supervisor Yu?
Here.
Supervisor Ellenberg?
I'm here.
Vice President Aranis?
Here.
President Lee?
Good afternoon, President, as well.
You have a question.
Thank you. So if you're in chambers and requiring the Spanish or Vietnamese translation, those translation devices are available at the back of the chambers. The clerk can assist you with the setup. Translation is also available on Zoom using the interpretation button. Additionally, as a gentle reminder for public commentators, staff, and those on the dais, please speak clearly and at the measured pace directly into the microphone to ensure accurate translation. And may I ask Supervisor Ellenberg to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please stand if you're able. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so now we're moving to item number 22 of our budget inventory proposals for the next fiscal year. Before we begin consideration of this item, I would like to propose this process to simplify how things are supposed to work. First, I'll ask the board to receive an overview of the inventory items from the administration. Next, we will hear the public comments on all the proposed inventory items. Finally, we will consider the balance of the agenda, and at that time, if any supervisor has any inventory items they would like to pull for discussion, this will be the time to do that. When you pull your items, please call out the inventory item number and the name of the organization for the record. For example, I would like to pull budget inventory number four for African-American Community Services Agency. That's a good way to identify the items and make it clear to for everybody. Once we've discussed all the pulled items, I will ask for a motion to approve all of the inventory items as amended and refer them to the June 12, 2025 budget hearing for the actual final adoption vote. So let's see. So Rhonda, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on any budget inventory items 1 through 376?
President Lee, can I just clarify?
Yes.
That the public comment that you're calling for applies to item number 22 as well as the inventory items from 23 through 393?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's right. So as a reminder, today's vote on inventory items is a preliminary vote, but it's not the final approval. The actual final approval will occur at the June 12 budget hearing. So please keep your comments brief, and if you have submitted a letter of support, there's really no need to speak on item as we really have received the comments. Thank you. Public comments queue. Yeah, so how many people do we have in person and on chambers?
I currently have 15 in person and one on Zoom. Two on Zoom. Looks like it's holding it to, oh, three on Zoom.
Five more seconds. Five, four, three, two, one. Liftoff. Okay, what we got here?
All right, we ended up with four on Zoom and 15 in person. We're closing the queue at 19.
19, very good. Let's do one minute each. I'm going to ask the speakers, we really don't need to repeat what's been sent to us on writing. And actually, if your proposal and the amount has already been listed on this, so long if they are not being pulled later, they will very likely be approved. So that's, I just want to make that comment clear. And let's start with the in-person speaker, please. Go ahead.
All right, we're going to go ahead and call a few people forward. Vu Tran, Njip Van, Khoi Nguyen, Kelsey Colson, Ha Fan, and Tao Tran. Please come forward. You can speak in any order.
Oh, one second. The mic is not working yet. Let's try again, Rhonda.
All right, testing one.
It works, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Good afternoon, the Honorable Board President Lee, Board Vice President Arana, Board Supervisor Ellenberg, Supervisor Betty Yu, Supervisor Abi Koga. My name is Vu Tran, and I'm here to give the support to inventory item number 188 and 11. For the purpose of support of Vietnamese-American community to create a safe and healthy environment for senior to gather and share their experience. And also like radio broadcasting on 1430 a.m. and 1590 a.m. to provide opportunity for the senior to reach now the county and other local jurisdiction for resort and services. Promote the culture, pride, and life skill among the youth through mentorship.
Thank you very much. And if any comments that you cannot read, you can also give it to the staff, and we'll add it to the record as well.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Come on. Please, come on up.
Good afternoon.
Oh, one second. The mic is not working yet. Let's try again, Rhonda.
All right, testing one.
It works, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Good afternoon, the Honorable Board President Lee, Board Vice President Arana, Board Supervisor Ellenberg, Supervisor Betty Yu, Supervisor Abi Koga. My name is Vu Tran, and I'm here to give the support to inventory item number 188 and 11. For the purpose of support of Vietnamese-American community to create a safe and healthy environment for senior to gather and share their experience. And also like radio broadcasting on 1430 a.m. and 1590 a.m. to provide opportunity for the senior to reach now the county and other local jurisdiction for resort and services. Promote the culture, pride, and life skill among the youth through mentorship.
Thank you very much. And if any comments that you cannot read, you can also give it to the staff, and we'll add it to the record as well.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Come on. Please, come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Di Phan. I'm the chairman of the United American Vietnamese-American Community Foundation. I come here to support item 22, and I say our thank you to my supervisor Betty Yu and Mr. Otto Lee and all others who help our community have a convenience to work. And it's a great for us. And one more time, I say thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you very much. Come on.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Khoya Nguyen, CFO of the UVA CNC Community Foundation. I come here to thank Supervisor Lee and Supervisor Yu and the board supporters. With the support of county, we can do some cultural event like night festival and Black April. And we also do some social service to community. That's been fun. We will talk separately. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, chambers. My name is Ha Phan, and I'm a member of the Community Foundation under United Vietnamese-Americans Community of Northern California. I'm here to, would like to, I would like to thank you, Member Otto Lee and Betty Yu for approving inventory item number 122 and 279. 122, that is to support all services for mental health education. And 279 is for providing services for community members. And I would like to ask you to final approve on June 12 for us to carry on our mission to support all those services. We have a lot of services every year for and events. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Colson, and I am the vice president of the Saosai Chapter of Sleep and Heavenly Peace. We are honored to have Supervisor Lee recommend us for a grant. This grant will be used to provide a fully furnished bed to a child 3 to 17 in San Jose who does not have a bed of their own. This grant helps show the commitment we collectively have to ensure kids in our community have what they need to feel safe, valued, and to succeed. Our chapter already has over 400 bed applications, and those bed applications fall into each one of your five districts. It is our goal to make sure no kid sleeps on the floor in Saosai, to raise awareness of how many kids in Santa Clara County do not have a bed of their own, and to encourage the start of more chapters in other Santa Clara County cities. We look forward to having you join us for bed builds and deliveries so you too can see the incredible impact this grant is having on our community. Thank you.
If we can have a few more people come forward. Chau Chi Lam, Angelica Ramos Allen, Alejandra Vargas, Destiny Pita, and Ha. Please come forward. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Tao Trinh, a health educator with Community Health Partnership. I provide health education training at the Vietnamese-American Service Center to our Vietnamese-speaking community and wish to comment on item number 44 and 224. Thank you, President Lee and Supervisor Yu, for including our funding request. If we approve, we could demonstrate our joint commitment to Vietnamese community by providing language appropriate diabetes and health education to a community that experiences significantly higher chronic disease rate than other AAPI groups. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Xin chào, tôi tên là Châu Lâm. Tôi là một thành viên trong cộng đồng người Việt đã được hưởng lợi từ các chương trình giáo dục về bệnh tiểu đường và những nguyện, những nguyện tử của Community Health Partnership. Tôi đang phát biểu về các mục bốn mươi bốn và hai trăm hai mươi bốn. Việc có các lớp học về bệnh tiểu đường được tổ chức trong cộng đồng của chúng tôi bằng ngôn ngữ mà chúng tôi hiểu và được kết nối thông tin với những trải nghiệm của chúng tôi là đều rất quan trọng. Nếu lớp học này cần được bằng dạy bằng tiếng Anh, nhiều người trong cộng đồng cũng chúng tôi có thể sẽ không có cơ hội cải thiện sức khỏe của mình. Xin cảm ơn quý vị.
Come on, the translator, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Chau Lâm, and I'm a member of Vietnamese community, and I come here to appreciate the community, the education class about the diabetes, whether it's organized in the community under forty-four and two-two-four. These classes actually organizing our language, Vietnamese, would help us a lot and to help improve our understanding about the health condition. In case these classes were taught in English only, it could be very hard for us, for the community to understand about our health and to improve it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Alejandra Vargas, and I am the Family and Community Engagement Manager at Grail Family Services and part of our Cisepoide Collective. Thank you for your continued support of our work in East San Jose Mayfair neighborhood and beyond. We're deeply grateful to Supervisor Young for the investment and programming that supports immigrant families as they navigate the emotional, legal, and logistical challenges of guardianship and family preparedness. Your support helps us offer healing circles, legal education, and trusted community-based resource navigation that builds long-term resilience. Thank you for standing with families and investing in grassroots solutions.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Destiny Penya, and I am a community organizer at Grail Family Services and also part of the Cisepoide Collective. Thank you for your continued support of our work in East San Jose Mayfair neighborhood and beyond. We also want to thank Supervisor Ellenberg for the inventory grant in support of our community policy agenda. This investment not only strengthens our advocacy with and for families in Mayfair, it also helps address childcare needs in communities in her district where some of our jobs-to-go graduates are now operating licensed family childcare homes. Thank you for standing with families and investing in grassroots solutions.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I am Angelica Ramos Allen, Director of Policy and Communications at Grail Family Services. We want to thank you for your support of our work. We are proud to be part of the Cisepoide Collective, and we, I echo my colleagues who have come before me to thank Supervisor Young and Supervisor Ellenberg for funding our work for families in not just their, their districts, but throughout the entire county. We do want to remind everyone that we provide childcare and family services that provide a long-term resilience for immigrant families, and we thank you for your hard work today.
If we can go ahead and call forward the final speakers, Nicole Chi Wing, Koi Nguyen, Amy Kaiser, and Agazi.
The Supervisor Board, my name is Sahat Hi, President of former Vietnamese RNP Foundation, and I organize every year at the, can, 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 over, over a thousand people, at least, come over. I think some of them already there, so this year I tried to apply for three-year district, district two, one, two, and three. We all include everybody in district, but I heard from, from district two, from Betty Young, and she approved of me for five thousand dollars. I still waiting for district one and two to answer, yes or no. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, my name is Nicole Chi Wong. I'm the Executive Director of Dreamcatchers. We provide an after-school enrichment program for almost two hundred socio-economically disadvantaged middle schoolers in Palo Alto Unified School District, as well as sustained service learning opportunities for high school students across District Five, over two hundred high school students, as well as important parent education and resources for our families. We are so grateful to Supervisor Abicoga for her support of the important work that we're doing in District Five. We hope to use the funds to deepen our support for our families, because without Dreamcatchers, they would not be able to access the full breadth of the educational opportunity that is afforded to families in Palo Alto. Thank you so much for your support.
Good afternoon, President of the Board and all the members. My name is Amy Kaiser, Associate Director of the Community Services Agency of Mountain View in Los Altos. I'm here on behalf of Community Services Agency to express our sincere gratitude for your continued support to Supervisor Abicoga of the funding that you provide. Thanks to your investment, we've been able to meet our community's growing needs with compassion and impact. Your support, which began in 2021, has allowed us, through our collaboration with the Mountain View Los Altos High School District, to provide a dedicated cast, case manager who offers onsite support to students and families, especially English language learners and newcomers as they navigate challenges like food insecurity, housing instability, and financial stress. Because of your support, this case manager is a steady, trusted presence at both high schools, meeting families where they are, connecting them with vital resources, and helping them to stabilize and thrive. Your funding makes this possible, and we're committed to continuing this critical work together. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Agazi Abai. I am a program coordinator at YuJima Adult and Family Services. I'm here to propose my support for item number one twenty-three, which provides a grant to our YuJima Summer Camp. As many people know, summer camps are crucial in young people's lives. Our summer camp is a little different. We take at-risk, heavily impacted, getting impacted youth to a college campus where we have camp, and they can experience what college is like for a full week. I am proud to say that over ninety percent of our past campgoers have all attended higher education. As of last year, our graduating seniors, a hundred percent of the campgoers attended higher education. These, again, are at-risk, heavily getting impacted youth. Here to, not just provide my support for item number one twenty-four, but to let y'all know that our camp does bear good fruit, as shows time and time again, and thank you.
We'll now move to our Zoom speaker, speakers. Our first speaker is Mary Adiso. We've asked you to unmute.
Thank you, I'm Mary Adiso. I'm here regarding agenda number two-six-four. I wanted to show my support for PACT, which is People Acting in Community Together. We work with twenty-two congregations in Santa Clara County, representing seventeen thousand residents, doing faith-based community organizing. I want to thank Supervisors Otto Lee and Duong, Duong, for your commitment to building a moral economy for all residents to be able to raise families in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Luna. Sharon, we've asked you to unmute.
Good afternoon, President Lee and Board of Supervisors. My name is Sharon Luna from the San Martine Association, speaking on item three-three-eight. Thank you, Supervisor Rena, for all your support. Together, we make a difference. Some of you only hear our concerns, however, let me tell you more about what the SMNA All Volunteer Board and community does. Our mission is to protect San Martine's rural atmospheres, support positive control of growth, promote neighborhood identity and vitality. It is important for decades, concerned residents and business owners of San Martine have witnessed the slow dilapidation of buildings and streets and homes in our area. If approved, this funding will help support efforts to engage the community through town hall meetings and empowering residents to shape the revitalization of their neighborhoods.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Sayam Mokthang.
Hi, I am Sayam Mokthang. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, and thank you very much to Supervisors Otto Lee and Betty Young for supporting our items. I am Santa Clara County resident and Senior Development Manager at Silicon Valley Education Foundation in support of inventory item number ninety-eight and number two-sixty-three, to provide a grant to Silicon Valley Education Foundation relating to tuition-free summer acceleration program. These programs equip students with foundational STEM skills and lead to measurable academic gains, including improved test scores, higher course performance, and increased high school graduation and college enrollment rates. Your support will expand access to high-quality learning experiences and support the long-term vision of increasing economic mobility for San Jose students and families. Thank you so much.
And this concludes our speakers.
All right, thank you very much, Rhonda. We'll go ahead and close the public comment section of this period of our discussion here. Now, before I turn to the board to pull the, each individual inventory items that need further discussion, I also want to ask the OBA staff for an overview on the inventory items. Yes? Thank you. So, while I pull that PowerPoint to make sure that it's presented, so in essence, we just have a couple of slides that will be shown for the public at this point, but let me connect to Zoom as well. Okay, so now I'll be sharing my screen. So, the inventory items, I think that you see now on the screen, this is the beginning of the slide for the Board of Supervisors meeting of today, and that we have heard from the public support today. So, as you know, the County of Santa Clara has established a process where we have set aside almost seven million dollars that is distributed, as you see in the amounts in front of you on the slides, is six point nine seven million as one-time cost that are set aside for specific purposes as delineating a process by the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors established their own specific processes in communicating with the community, the process that they will have to follow in the form of an application and a request for funding from the community. After those applications are reviewed by the board offices, then they communicate with the Office of Budget and Analysis, where we track all the different requests that were received by the different board offices, and then we assign a number. And the result of all of that process results in the recommendations that are presented today before you, for the Board of Supervisors, for consideration. The amounts that are displayed on the screen in front of you is a combination of a flat amount that is provided to each of the districts, and also an amount that is also distributed in the form of formula up to two million dollars. That two million dollar amount, when the Board of Supervisors met about a month ago or so, was modified from the two million dollar amount to approximately one point nine seven million dollars. And the ending result is that from all the requests that we've received from the public and that the board is considering to approve as part of the budget hearings in the next few weeks, you see that we had received fifty-two different inventory items for District One, a hundred and thirteen items for District Two, a hundred and thirty-seven for District Three, thirty for District Four, and thirty-nine items for District Five. So, this is where we are today, and in essence, we are just asking for your consideration on those proposals that were being actually recommended by the Board of Supervisors offices individually. So, that concludes my presentation, but I just wanted to make sure that we done, that we do mention that these specific requests will be considered, considered for actual approval during the budget hearings that will commence on June nine at one-thirty. They'll continue in June ten, and we will finalize the, those budget hearings on June twelve. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be ready to go to the next steps of the process, as the board wishes. Thank you very much. Okay, let me get back to where we were. Okay, so first of all, thank you so much for our staff for putting together a lot of these different inventory items. This is probably one of the largest inventory item list that we've had in history, and it also shows what the need is. Now, before I, I go forward, I just want to have a quick opening statement, if I may. Everybody can see from the list of organizations that receive inventory grants, this is truly an effort that highlights the diversity, breadth, and the depth of services as far as a significant unmet need within our community here in our county. While every office may approach this process in its own unique way, our shared goals remain the same: to continue supporting organizations that serve our diverse community, address service gaps, and direct positive impact on the lives of Santa Clara County residents. The wide range of groups highlights many ways our community is being served, from housing and foot assistance to education, health, and cultural programming. We appreciate the input and engagement from all offices, and we recognize that collaboration strengthens our ability to meet the needs of our residents more effectively. This process also allows each office to engage in a way that aligns with the priorities while contributing to a broader and united effort. At a time when there's so much fiscal uncertainty facing many of our nonprofit partners, I'm truly honored and glad that we can help fill these gaps. With that, I'd like to go ahead and turn to my colleagues to see if there are inventory items they would like to pull for discussion. And do you mind if I go down the line from Supervisor Abicoga to see if you have any items specifically? Nope, she's shaking her head, she has no items. That was easy. All right, Supervisor Young. Oh, nothing either. Okay, Supervisor Ellenberg, also shaking her head as well. Okay, Vice President Rena.
I do, I have one item, and that's item two eighty-eight, and this is for the former Vietnamese Regional Popular Foundation, and this is for, I know Mr. Tru Ha came in, I don't know if he's still here, but we did fund his organization, and I was hoping that he was here so we could share that information. So, we did fund him. Happy to, to, to be supportive and look forward to the event over at Lake Cunningham. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. You guys are...
Actually, there's one thing, one additional thing. I know that, I think it was last year Supervisor Ellenberg, that we figured out how to break, break down or distribute the one million that we set aside for the five of us that we share, and while the formula wasn't perfect, I think that there is an opportunity for us to talk about, and it doesn't have to be in this, obviously, because decisions have already been made, but we can, as a group, collectively figure out how do we distribute, and what data do we use in order to determine what that looks like? And so, I'm happy to, you know, open this up for either our next fiscal year, and it doesn't have to be now, we can talk about it next year as we are approaching budget season, but I know it's something that isn't perfect. Oh, Mr. Ha. Going that way. So anyways, I just wanted to mention that because I know that it wasn't, we just kind of did it in our ad hoc committee, if you remember Supervisor Ellenberg, but we have new members, and, and I'm happy to bring it up as we, as we look forward to the following year, and we can figure out what that looks like. Anyways, thank you, that was it.
Okay, that was easy, and there are these I would like to pull, but seems, looks like I'm only one going to go through these changes here, and I apologize to my colleagues that we're doing it on the dais, because this could be confusing at times, but I tried to also get a copy of this to Sunshine earlier to explain some changes. And so, as it has been my practice for the past few years, my office have reviewed the budget inventory matrix and taken note of organizations that are being recommended for funding from multiple offices. Our office staff has painstakingly put together a special spreadsheet for this very purpose, and I would like to request that the specific purpose of these grants be added to OBA spreadsheet in the future, because although sometimes a item might look like a duplicate, organizations actually reach... organizations actually reaching out to our offices for actually different projects. And the ones I would like to ask to adjust the amount is because of the following reasons. Number one is to invest more deeply in critical programs and services. Two is some of the requests was duplicative upon the office now that has been sunshine, meaning that organizations is receiving funding from another office for the same program, service, or event. And in one case, I, I had to adjust the scope for the work for the grant based on the amount of funding an organization's recommended receive. So the ones I would like to change are as follows. For budget inventory item number four, for the AXA African Americans Community Service Agency, I'll go ahead and like to reduce the amount I proposed by twenty-five hundred dollars, bringing the amount from our office to ten thousand dollars. For budget inventory item forty-four, for Helping Hands Silicon Valley, I would like to add the additional ten thousand dollars to the grant I'm proposing to Helping Hands Silicon Valley for a total of twenty-five thousand dollars. For budget inventory item fifty-three, for the Jose Valdez Math Foundation, I would like to decrease the amount by five thousand dollars for a total, new total of five thousand dollars. For the budget inventory item sixty-two, for the LGBDQ Plus Victories Institute, like to decrease the amount by five thousand dollars for a new total of ten thousand dollars. For budget inventory item number ninety-seven, for our city, I'd like to amend the recommended action language as follows. Quote, approve inventory item number seventy-five to provide a grant of our city in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars relating to the establishing a one-day program dedicated toward financial literacy knowledge for East San Jose and Foothill areas, and refer item for final consideration approval on June twelve, twenty twenty-five. Unquote. The proposed one-day program will not include a field trips or stipends. As outlined in the original ledge file, there is a supplemental memo that has been added to today's agenda to reflect this change. And I have a few more. For budget inventory item one oh seven, for the Society of Hearts alight, I would like to decrease the grant from ten thousand to five thousand dollars. For budget item one thirty, for the Vae Young Language Schools, I would like to increase the grant by twenty-five hundred dollars, so the amount is now thirty-five hundred dollars. For budget item number two twenty-two, for CACs, which stands for Korean-American Community Services, I would like to also add ten thousand dollars to the current grant, to supervisor Jung's grant to the CACs, to help backfill a grant that they have lost from City of San Jose for older adult health and wellness. And that's all the changes I have, and if I'm not clear, I would ask any of my colleagues to ask, I'd be happy to repeat any of those, but if not, I would just ask for motion to approve with these amended changes.
Motion to approve.
Approve with the changes, yeah.
A second.
Moved and seconded. All right. And again, that's the case, I'll ask Rhonda.
President Lee, can I just...
Yes, please, go Tony, please.
It's a little bit confusing because the inventory item numbers are different than the agenda item numbers.
Ah.
So I just want to clarify that the changes you identified for item four relate to agenda item twenty-six, for forty-four to agenda item sixty-six, to fifty-three for agenda item seventy-five, sixty-two agenda item eighty-four, ninety-seven is, one second here. Agenda item one nineteen, one oh seven is agenda item one twenty-nine, one thirty is agenda item one fifty-two, and two twenty-two is agenda item two forty-one. So, just for the record.
Well, thank you very much, Tony. That was impressive on those numbers and how to get those cleaned up. I, I'm truly impressed. Yes, Rhonda, I think that's clear and let's go take a vote, please.
Supervisor Abi Koga?
Aye.
Supervisor Jung?
Yes.
Supervisor Ellenberg?
Yes.
Vice President Renas?
Yes.
President Lee?
I as well.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Again, that's not the final vote and these recommended, recommended changes, this will be actually voted on finally on June twelve, as we mentioned earlier. All right, if I don't see any lights or any other, oh, I see Tony, your light's still on. Yes? Okay, well, if that's the case, I believe we actually get to the end of the agenda if there's no further comments. Wow, this is great. All right, so our budget workshops have now been concluded and now we're journeying to June second, our close session and ceremonial meeting. I just wanted, again, says thank you so very much to our OBA staff, our clerk team and our security staff, and our community that came to speak. And we'll see you all in, actually, May twentieth, I think, for the next meeting, correct? Yes, that's our next board meeting. All right? Sounds good to everybody? Yes, thank you. Meeting adjourned, thank you.